For the October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one joint special meeting of the Monteserino City Council and Site and Architectural Commission. Before this meeting is called to order, I would like to point out a few house rules to assist council members, commissioners, staff, and members of the public to successfully participate in this meeting. Council members and commissioners, your microphone is live, so please keep your microphones on mute until you wish to speak. For tonight's meeting, we are using Zoom to host the joint special meeting. At the bottom of the Zoom client, there are two icons, chat and raise hand. Please use chat only to report technical issues such as being unable to hear council members or commissioners speaking. Please use the raise hand function to be recognized by the mayor and enabled to speak to the council and commission. To comment under oral communication or on any agenda item, you're allowed three minutes to speak per agenda item. Emails limited to three hundred fifty words can also be submitted to the city clerk and it will be read into the record. This word limit is set here to the typical three-minute time limits. Only attendees using the Zoom application can use the raise hand action to comment. Participants calling in from the telephone will only be able to listen, making up light feedback or public comment. Lastly, because we are all not in the same room, all votes of this meeting will be taken by roll call.
Thank you. All right. Hereby call the six P M. Joint Special Meeting of the City Council and Site and Architectural Commission for Tuesday, October nineteenth, two thousand twenty-one to order. Roll call, please.
Start with the council. Councilmember Lawler.
Present.
Councilmember McCichek.
Present.
Councilmember Turner.
Present.
Mayor Portemalahi.
Present.
And Mayor Leopold.
Present.
And Site and Architectural Commission. Commissioner Harrington. Do not see Commissioner Harrington on the call. Commissioner Zaidler.
Present.
Commissioner Sharma. Commissioner Sharma is also not on the call. Commissioner Bishay.
Booker, Mr. Booker, let me know he would. He would not be able to be present tonight.
Thank you. And Commissioner White.
I am here. Thank you.
You have a form.
All right, great. So let's move next to oral communications. If we have any members of the public wishing to speak about matters which are not on the agenda, that is matters which don't relate to the objective standards. If there are members of the public who would like to be recognized on those matters, please raise your hand. If you're here to speak on the design standards, we'll go ahead and have public comment about that later. So give people a second to process that. Seeing no hands up, we will close oral communications. Ms. Radcliffe, do we have any written communications that haven't reached the packet? You may have lost her attention.
Sorry, yes. There is no written communications.
All right. Thank you. Okay, so moving to the first order of business, which is the study session. Do we have a staff report or a report on this? If so, let's go ahead and have the report first, then open to public comment and then have the full discussion after we go through that process.
So good evening, councilmembers and commissioners. I am Diana Quicken, the city planner with Monteserino. And I just wanted to give a very brief introduction before Tom Ford from the M group gives a little more information on these draft objective standards. These were developed based on a community meeting that was held on June twenty-third as well as feedback we received from members of the council ad hoc committee. And this is considered a working draft of the objective design standards. And tonight, we're seeking your feedback and input to move forward with a final administrative draft, which is scheduled to be heard by the Site and Architectural Commission in November and the City Council in December. And that concludes my staff report.
Great, thank you. And Ms. Ford, do you have a report for us, introduction to all of this?
Yes, I have a very brief presentation. I'm pulling it up right now. Sorry. Good evening, members of the council and members of the commission. Some of you I've spoken with before. We went to a meeting of the Site and Architecture Committee, Commission back before the summer, and we've been working and since then, we've also had the community forum and an ad hoc committee meeting. So I, again, I'm just going to give a very brief meeting, presentation. I think we all know why we're here and why we're developing objective standards. But to hear from the California Government Code, it's a piece of text from S B thirty-five that states very clearly what an objective standard is and the fact that there just can't be any misinterpretation of any kind of guideline as certain kinds of development proposals come before the city. The big thing that we've been seeing in trying to help jurisdictions understand is that this is actually a great tool for you because if these projects come through and they meet certain requirements usually related to affordability or A D U accessory dwelling unit or something like that. The ordinary discretionary review process that you folks would do is gone. And anything that would be, any kind of a review process would happen at the ministerial level by city staff. So if you look at the left column there at the bottom, the, the bold text, that seems to be the piece of text that's coming up in all of the different housing legislation that staff must use objective design standards in its review. And those reviews are usually fairly quick, thirty, sixty, and ninety days, depending on the regulation that the development proposal might follow. So what we're, what we're doing here is providing that tool that hopefully will stand in for what the Site and Architecture Commission and then ultimately the City Council would normally do in a review of a development proposal. So what we've done since the beginning, which was earlier this year, we've looked at a series of city documents, including the design guidelines. And I know the ad hoc committee looked at those pretty deeply too. So we look at that just to get that, just to get an understanding of what the community's design intentions are. What are the things that they look for in a development proposal? Then we've come and we've also visited your various neighborhoods, seen the difference in typographies, parcel size, fronting streets, just the differing types of residential character that you have. Then we attended one site and architecture committee meeting, got a little bit of input from them, introduced the project. We had a community forum. A number of issues were raised there, including privacy and privacy from second levels, privacy from upper floor balconies, things like that, reducing the appearance of masks. And then also an issue that came up a lot was ways to, to have architectural detailing, if you will, on the facades and the buildings, just to give them a little bit of character so that when they're built, they're not just a blank slate. After that, we've also looked at a number of other communities, anywhere from Bay Area communities to as far along as Santa Barbara, Nukaya, South, South Lake Tahoe, places that have already been adopting objective standards in the last couple of years. Then we took just a brief list of issues to the ad hoc committee meeting in advance of this and got some feedback from them, which was very helpful. So right now, the document that you, you were given, I guess, last week to review is laid out along the lines of this. And this is kind of how we see the document coming together. And I believe the last time I talked to city staff, it's envisioned that this will get adopted as a chapter in the municipal code. So this is kind of how we're laying out the subject matter as it is right now. And these are the subject that would be great to hear comments from tonight, comments on from all of you tonight. So just a reminder of where we are, we're there right tonight is the, is the circle that has a red rectangle around it. So we're at this joint council study session. What you have before you to speak to us about tonight is what we're calling a working draft. We're going to take that and the comments that we get from you tonight and then any additional discussions we have with your staff. And we'll create an admin draft. See it up there. Shortly after this meeting, we should be able to pull that together. Let the staff review that, give us comments on that. From that, we will create a public review draft and that'll be released for the community to see and comment on in advance of a Site and Architecture Commission meeting at which they will provide their feedback, their input, their suggestions. And then we will write up their comments in a memo and we will submit the public review draft and the comments from the Site and Architecture Commission to a city council meeting where we will ask you to consider the objective standards for adoption. Following that meeting, including any kinds of comments and feedback we get from the city council, we will create your final document. We envision this being able to happen, depending, of course, on your schedules this year, this calendar year. So that's the extent of my presentation and I'm willing to ask or answer any questions. We're really excited to hear any comments you might have on the document.
Great, thank you very much. At this point, before we start asking questions, since this is a study session and I expect we're going to be having a lot of input and back and forth, let me go ahead and open up the public comment on this and find out if we have any members of the public who wish to be heard on issues here tonight. And we may be able to come back to the public, but don't assume that's going to be the case. If you have comments that you'd like us to hear, please put your hands up now and go ahead and provide your input. Ms. Ying, you're up first.
Yeah, Miss Ying isn't available. Phil Levine is. It's okay, I'm on her P C.
That's all right. That's all right, Mr. Levine. I'll hear from you.
A couple, a couple of comments real quickly. I'm a little bit worried about the term objective. I, we had a family friend in Connecticut that was a landscape architect trained in Columbia. And his clients included Paul Newman and Elizabeth Taylor. And from what I could see, at least from a landscaping, and I'm just using this as an example, a lot of what he did was objective. It wasn't objective, it was subjective and it was kind of artistic. I, I think we need to be careful to think that we can plug it into an equation or an algorithm and have it spit out with no human judgment. So I would, I would encourage us not to make it too algorithmic, if there's such a word, and to have some room for some judgment, valid judgment, because I don't think a lot of this is art and I don't think it can be put in a mathematical formula. Couple of quick comments. As most of you know, like Sean, I live near the school. I really hope that I know that the church is a target for a lot of you. I've heard rumors that the city is actually considering getting bonds to buy the church property. I don't know if that's true or not. I'd like to urge you to be objective is to look at the kids' safety at Dave's Avenue School. That might actually be a good place for a project. I don't know. I'd also like to remain, remind you, my understanding is a lot of the north forty traffic will be, they're going to be increased with north forty with students and stuff, and that will also be important. So I hope you can all take that into account objectively. Second item, I'd just like to remind you, I think it's really good and important for people to see things from both perspectives. As some of you know, we're currently sitting on, we're currently surrounded by three different projects right now. So I'm kind of overwhelmed with dealing with noise and all sorts of things. We went for the Architectural Commission. We lost trying to get a porch expanded. But we could disagree on that. But the one thing I might add is that no one at any time came on our property and looked at it from our perspective. Then we'll look at the other side's perspective. I think we got a raw deal. We have a, we have a porch that's fit for a queen. And I have to ask the both the planner and the architectural members, take the time to look at these issues from both sides, if they really want to be objective. So I'd just like to pass it on. Last comment I'd like to make real quickly, which is kind of related, is being objective about noise. It shouldn't be left up to the homeowners to enforce the noise policy. I know we can call it in, but I've had deliveries at five in the morning. People keep on saying, oh, I'm sorry. And I like to urge whoever does the enforcement in town that they should do random drop-in, drop-ins at seven thirty or seven o'clock in the morning to really see that these contractors are following what they signed up for. From my experience, they all break the rules. They all say, I'm sorry. They will all behave themselves for about a week after you get after them, but then they'll end up doing the same thing. So that's basically what I have to say on, keep into. Remember that a lot of this is not purely objective, it's artistic. Please look at things from the other perspective and please think about the noise requirements and how the city can help enforce it, not putting it on the back of the people. Thank you very much.
Great, thank you, Mr. Levine. Other comments, anyone else, members of the public wishing to be heard before we get into this? Yes, we've got somebody, S I L B. We'll go ahead and recognize you.
There you go. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, I would like to encourage the people who are making these decisions to consider when we're, if there are going to be some potentially large parcel, large buildings going up, whether or more buildings than what we're used to. I'd like to encourage people to take a kind of broader perspective and look at things that you haven't considered before. For example, I would think it would be better for most of us, most of us would consider it better to have people not breathing down our necks on this, you know, on the side looking into our yards versus like there's some sort of a restriction about not building in the front yard. If you go beyond a setback in the front yard, like if you've gone to the setback and you build behind that, so what it is okay now, then it should be okay, I would think, because there are several buildings in Los Gatos and maybe perhaps these are in Monteserino as well that have gotten a variance where there's a second building in front. I would much prefer somebody to be in front in their own property as opposed to breathing down my neck and the side or like being in front of somebody's backyard, if somebody's front door. If they're building in the back, which is a four foot, I believe, four foot setback according to the state. I mean, I would much rather have you guys consider some other parameters and consider our privacy because that should be the ultimate concern. Right now, I think a big worry is that there's going to be, our, our privacy is going to be impeded upon and that we're, we're not going to have the same privacy that we're all used to or that we all bought here. None of us, most of us don't want to live in a city and that's why we live where we live. I, for one, don't want to live in a city. And so I, I would really encourage you to take those kinds of things under consideration and go beyond the scope of what you used to think was okay because things are changing. The other thing is, we need to consider that we have to keep areas green, which means that if we still have trees, we can't hurt the trees. We don't want to take down trees and we can use trees to screen. And that's another thing to consider is if you're gonna have something in a, in a front yard, a front area, say, it should be screening. And then again, piggybacking on that last comment is not every property is the same. Let's, you know, not take this narrow perspective and say, well, your property is like your next door's. It's not. And so what we should do is you should be able to look at a site and say, well, this is an exception to what we like to see, but this will work here. I mean, that is the way we should proceed because these things are changing and this is not the way it used to be. That's what I have to say in three minutes.
Thank you very much. Got it in early. Good job. Okay, next up is Michelle.
Can you hear okay?
Yep, there you are.
Yeah, okay. A few points. Construction access, I don't know how you would incorporate these into objective standards, but I will say, please find a way to incorporate them because many of the streets in Monteserino are very narrow and construction traffic really becomes hazardous. And we've lived it for the last two years and it's been miserable. And I think there's got to be a better way that we enforce accessibility and be realistic about accessibility. Some of these roads just cannot handle the kind of projects that are going up right now. Secondly, utility loads. We are just coming off of a fresh P G E power outage because of a bad trenching job. There has got to be some acknowledgement and responsibility on these projects to the load on aging utility lines. And the new owners need to be responsible for upgrading rather than finding out after the fact that the new areas cannot handle the loads that the new construction requires. Another idea, open living, which is very in right now, are open outdoor living areas. Please can we have that acknowledged where that is relationship to neighboring sleeping areas? We can't be having open party areas pointing right at a neighbor's sleeping area. That just seems like an area that we should be able to get some thoughtful verbiage. And then I guess the overall comment I would have is compliance even with objective standards. I just think the city is struggling with compliance. It's gotten too big. And I would wonder from this, this committee, how you think we can improve on compliance so we don't have the classic, I'll ask forgiveness after the fact, which seems to be the de facto way we're doing things in Monteserino. So those are just my thoughts. Thank you for hearing them out.
Great, thank you very much. All right, anyone else, members of the public wishing to let us know your thoughts as we get into this discussion tonight? Seeing none, we will go ahead and close public comment and let's bring this back now to the council and committee members for your questions, comments, discussion. Ms. Turner, your hand was up first.
Yes, I just wanted to update the council on some of the new things that have happened recently that may impact what we're doing here tonight. Councilmember Lawler and I were part of the ad hoc committee and we contributed to the presentation that you're going to see tonight. However, there are some new things that have happened since September sixteen. September the sixteenth, Governor Newsom signed both S B nine and S B ten. And S B nine actually allows for density in fire areas. So what's going to happen is we're going to see concerns in the wildfire area for wildfires as well as access in, in our streets. There is a new state initiative, there is a group that have combined their resources to come up with the objective standards for density for S B nine. S B nine will come into effect January first. So if we have objective standards that talk about wildfires, not from a lot perspective, but from a community perspective, we will be better off. Okay, so I think we need to look at that tonight. We need to look at what does it mean to be a fire risk and that's pretty hard to quantify. The other thing that we need to look at is insurance companies may not insure properties if they are in high fire danger areas. So we need to account for those things. We also need to look at the traffic situation that's going to happen. Again, this is from a community level, not from a lot perspective. We also need to consider evacuation standards. How do we evacuate in, in terms of, of higher density? And also, how do we mitigate, a lot of our, well, two of our residents tonight talked about access, road access. One of the things we could look at is actually saying, if your street is less than twenty feet wide, then perhaps we can build high density in that area. So some of these things, the, the different cities will give us, you know, their best practices. And, and I would encourage us to incorporate that before January first. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, anyone else? Next, next up, anyone, yeah, Ms. Lawler.
Thank you. First of all, I wanted to say, those are interesting points that Councilmember Turner made. But I did want to ask, we had discussed open living spaces or entertainment spaces that were adjacent to someone's sleeping spaces. And I don't see it necessarily addressed in this document, but I know we discussed it. And I know that we discussed it in conjunction with sports courts and providing screening and privacy in that respect. And I'm wondering if we can intertwine some noise language as well that would be considered objective. That's point one. And the other point is regarding traffic congestion. Perhaps, I don't know if there's any way that street parking or lack thereof can be considered a portion of an objective standard. I'm not quite sure if there's any kind of way we can connect that. But anyway, those are my thoughts for now. Thanks.
Great, thank you. All right, who's next? Yeah, Mayor Portemalahi.
Hey, thank you. Yeah, I, I think excellent points have been made today. And I suspect more will be made. And I think we have to keep it, keep in mind that we're trying to preserve the character of Monteserino in the midst of a violent storm that's brewing out there, which wants to convert every lot into four houses. And, you know, and, and I think we can really stand in the way of it, but we can make sure we preserve our characteristic as much as possible. So some of the things that I've mentioned are, are going to be very helpful, I think, especially looking at the, how wide the streets are because of the fire issues. And some of the things that I, I thought you may also want to consider, the different slopes that are in different places, whether their effects on what kind of houses can be built depending on the slope. The other issue that has come up in hearings before us has to do with how much soil has to be removed in order to put a, you know, a, a house on, on a residence. So maybe we need to codify what amount of soil would be acceptable since there is a landslide issue. And the third thing that I think you should also address is the environmental concerns about greenhouse gases. I sent just about twenty minutes before the meeting, the San Jose City ordinance, which requires that all new buildings must be gas-free. And, and they accepted the A D U, so the A D Us will still be built that are in existence, continue with gas, but all new buildings that are built should be gas-free. I think that would also help us with environmental issues and probably, you know, help with some of the lots that are being built. So, so there's still a lot of stuff to be considered and I think those on the Site and Architecture Commission, I'm sure they have some very great suggestions. Look forward to hearing them. Hopefully we can come up with an objective plan that will make it easier because it's not going to be easy. Anytime this comes up and the way the ordinance is drafted, it won't even come to a hearing. So a neighbor, all of a sudden, they'll find that right next to them, there are four houses being built. And they'll say, what happened here? I wasn't notified this is happening. And that's going to happen and that's happening. So maybe though, even though this is a ministerial process in the sense, I think we may want to consider adopting at least a notice requirement or a notice requirement on us that, you know, when, when something like this is submitted, the city will send out notices to all the neighbors, let them know it's happening and it's a ministerial process and there isn't going to be. But, you know, if they want to go to court or do something else, at least they, they don't get shocked when, you know, four houses go up there right next to them. Thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I'm interested in hearing certainly from the committee and commission on these. But I wanted to go ahead and kind of underline a few of the things that have been said and some notes that I had coming in here. One is echoing what Councilmember Turner brought up about S B nine. I was studying that today. And I think it really teaches us and informs us that two things. Number one, it has underlined again the issue of objective standards and how important objective standards are. Not just for the, what we were already working on, but S B nine also. Not just for the, what we were already working on, but SB 9 also makes reference to objective standard. If there are other agencies, other cities out there, or anyone that is working on, as Ms. Turner points out, things that can be added to the objective standards that might address some of the SB 9 issues. We should be looking at that very much and, and of course, acting as quickly as possible because of the January 1st dates on that. Related to that, some of the things I wanted to add were, we're also grading in soils. We do have some objective standards, I believe, already for that. I think we might want to tighten that up or even expand that. That might be something that is objective, that could take away a lot of the ministerial. Because if someone's bringing in something that requires very much grading at all, it could get kicked out and out of the ministerial process. What Mr. Law he said, I think is very interesting and deserves to be explored, which is, what can we do about notice requirements, especially when things are ministerial? ADUs already are quite ministerial. And we had to put the rules in place and people can now throw them up 16 feet tall, four feet from the fence line. And there's, the neighbors don't know about that until it's under construction, essentially. We certainly, if we can avoid having that happen with entire houses and lot splits under SB 9, people are going to feel much better served rather than seeing the groundbreaking. And I don't know how this is going to affect story polls. Our story poll is going to be required in advance to give us notice and give the neighbors notice on these permits that are now going to be ministerial. Can we put in something objective about a story poll requirement for any given size that might otherwise be ministerial? To make sure that everyone's on notice about what's going on, maybe important. Outdoor living spaces, I wanted to underline that as well. I think that's, as Ms. Turner pointed out and Public Comment pointed out, that's something that very much needs to be considered, given our climate, given recent trends. And the effect that it has on neighbors is going to be quite important. So if we can put those objective standards in about what people can and can't do, that may, again, bring things to our attention if people aren't putting in things that are very basic. Near and dear to the hearts of everyone who moved here for the scenery, tree removal. Tree removal can be a very strong tool for us, I think, if we can put those into the objective standards. And that may be an area where we can expand the emphasis that Montesereno has about not disturbing the existing trees, the existing landscape as much as possible. Also, that feeds back into soils and grading. That's going to be challenging potentially in light of SB 9, which adds even more requirements that we allow thing, lot splitting and that we not put things in the way of the lot splits. So I think we're going to have to really look at what other cities think they can do and get away with on that. Another thing I heard today for the first time from a citizen here, but was reading an article about just earlier today, the issue of utility loads. And especially with the push towards all electric houses and electric charging for vehicles. Apparently, there are a lot of utilities that are failing nowadays. And so what can we do to make sure that utility loads are taken into account? We're not causing fires, blowing transformers or affecting the people who are happily living the way they're living right now by allowing the lot splits in the new construction? I don't know if there are objective standards or ways we can put that in, but that seems like it may be something powerful that we could work with. So let's see if I had any others here. I thought Ms. Turner's comments about street sizes and ingress egress wildfires, evacuation. This may be something that much more in the general plan. If we can make references that are compliant with SB 9. There are rules about wildfire. I believe it said that the the designation has to come down from the state regarding the wildfire issue. But I think we need to research that and see whether we could designate or whether we can fit ourselves into the state designation, certain neighborhoods, certain areas, or certain street sizes. Because we certainly don't want a tragedy on our hands. And again, this may be a way to limit the growth. Oh, lastly, slope density, we have objective slope density formulas right now. Is that something we can tighten up further to limit the sizes of buildings on the slopes? Would it be reasonable and objective for us to be more aggressive about what is a slope and what are the appropriate densities? Because that might be something we could make objectively. So those are my comments and thoughts. And I know it's a lot. Let's hear from Mr. Mekkecheck and then certainly hear from Site and Architecture.
Thank you. First of all, I'd like to only make a couple of very brief comments because I really want to hear from the Site and Architectural Commissioners. They have dealt with this for a number of years and I have a deep respect for their experience and knowledge. My only comments are, right now, are that I think we have to address sustainability in these, in our objective standards. And that's, that's environmental sustainability. And then the other one is anything to do with landscaping, I think should promote native Northern California landscaping. But I'd like to make comments after Site and Architecture. Thank you.
Hey, thank you. Let's have our Site and Architecture people weigh in. As Mr. Mekkecheck pointed out, you bring so much expertise and we rely on you so much here. So let's hear what you guys have to add. Mr. White?
Thank you. I don't know that I have much to add. I actually have some questions for Mr. Ford and perhaps for Mr. Rudin. I'm curious if we, there seems to be some sense of urgency about adopting these objective standards. And my question is, if we don't adopt these before the end of the year, what happens if an SB 35 eligible project is submitted? What, what standards are then applied?
So to a certain extent, your existing standards that are in place, to the extent that they are objectives, still apply. I don't anticipate any sort of SB 35 projects ever being proposed within the city of Montesereno, just because they have such significant affordability requirements that would make them financially imfeasible. But, you know, with SB 9, you know, basically whatever objective standards you have are the ones that apply. So your height limits, your existing height limits would apply, your existing setback requirements would apply, your existing coverage requirements would apply. You know, your story limits, you know, if you don't, you don't allow a three-story building, so that would apply. But basically, anything that is subjective or, you know, open to reasonable debate would be something that the city couldn't apply. Additionally, you know, your tree removal requirements, to the extent that they would interfere with an SB 9 compliant project, there would be a reasonable basis to assume that they're likely to be overridden. So, you know, it's a good idea to have a process in place and whatever standards we can adopt with respect to SB 9 projects, you know, in place before January 1st. You know, including indicating who at the city would be responsible for managing the ministerial approval process. So those are all things to consider.
Thank you. Thank you very much. And then I would like to see the diagrams. I know that the, the working draft references, diagrams are going to be put in there. But if you like, if you look at the city of Los Altos's objective standards, they have diagrams. It's very helpful to understanding the types of concepts that people are to understand when they're submitting an application. So I would like, at least for the next Site and Architecture Commission, at which we're going to be reviewing this, to have those diagrams as part of the draft. That's all right with you, Mr. Ford?
Yes, of course.
And then I echo comments about, you know, proximity of entertaining areas from bedrooms, neighboring bedrooms. I think that's an important point. I'm also curious about, what about impervious surfaces? Are those already part of other aspects of the municipal code? You know, I don't, you know, concerned about the concrete jungle being proposed, where we have no soil, no real landscaping, and everything's in concrete, which we have seen from time to time on the Site and Architecture Commission. Is that something governed by a separate aspect of the municipal code already in place? Or should that be part of these objective standards?
I will answer that briefly. Every single one of our zoning designations, whether that's R8 or, you know, another zoning district has a coverage standard, which is basically the maximum amount of, you know, building you can put on a lot. There are, there is the potential also to enact specific hardscape requirements. And I would kick it to the planner as to what ours currently are, if any. I also know that projects do, over a certain size, need to comply with the state requirements with respect to modern, the model water efficiency landscape ordinance, which is a matter of state law. So there are certain landscaping requirements already in place under state law, in addition to whatever we have locally.
Great, thank you. So I had principally questions, I apologize, then answers or suggestions. But I would like to echo the comments, I think, of all the council members regarding notice. This is going to get really ugly if we can't deliver some sort of notice. And so we'd like some guidance in developing these objective standards about what types of notice we can require of applicants. And so that everybody has an opportunity to deliver input, notwithstanding the objective, air quotes, standards. So those are any of my comments. Thank you, guys.
Great, thank you. And I'd like to bring up just a, an expansion on what you mentioned about the impervious surfaces. It's my understanding that the ADU rules are a direct exception to the impervious surfaces. So essentially, we had the standards for impervious surfaces. The ADU said you cannot use impervious surfaces to block an ADU. I'm wondering if that means that we should perhaps, and would we be legally allowed under our objective standards or revisions to the code to expand impervious surfaces for houses overall? To take into account that the ADUs are going to take away at least 800 square feet or 1,200 square feet on the inevitable addition of the ADUs now.
That is a very good question. And in general, under state law, basically any subjective standards that you have in place that were adopted prior to 2020 can remain in place and can continue to be applied. That being said, as state law advances, they continue to poke new holes in terms of what we can and can continue to apply in terms of our subjective standards. Under SB 9, one of the issues is that a local agency shall not, you can impose any subjective standards and you shall not impose any objective standards that would have the effect of physically precluding the construction of two units on either of the resulting parcels that are subdivided, or that would result in a unit size of less than 800 square feet. Now, realistically speaking, most of the lot sizes in Montesereno are at least, you know, a half acre. So I think the smallest lot size that I've heard of in Montesereno is somewhere in the order of around 5,000 square feet. So you could, you know, have coverage requirements, but you're not going to impose them in a manner that would basically prevent 1,600 units of coverage. Now, our maximum single building size for our smallest zoning district, I believe, is 3,300 square feet. So that's not really too big of an issue. You know, the SB 9, you know, limits are relatively small for coverage. And we're already considerably more generous, you know, in terms of the main house size. So, yes, I think the answer is you can impose coverage and square footage limits. I just don't know that you would necessarily need to in light of what you typically allow for the primary dwelling.
Yeah, so I guess my, I would kind of kick this back to Site and Architecture. They're familiar with the numbers and the math and they've seen lots of projects, I think, that will push the limits of coverage at the 35 or the 40% coverage in many places, because, because of the driveways and the swimming pools and other hard surfaces are considered. So I suggest that any input you all can provide us to, again, potentially expand that. I don't know, remember what we're at. Are we at 35 or 40% coverage? Now the ADUs can take away and force themselves in. But do we want to drop it to a 20 or a 25% coverage before it triggers somebody having to make a request for a variance or bringing it to our attention? So, and that's something we might want to move quickly on because it sounds to me like that's something objective that could go into objective standard. Ms. Turner, did you put your hand back up or was it still up from before?
Yeah, I put my hand back. Can I say something quickly? I don't think SB 9 defines actually what a single family home is. So can we make the second unit address stricter fire safety standards? As we're doing our objective standards, I mean, I think that's an angle we should look at.
All right, yeah, definitely studying SB 9, figuring out that interaction about the two units. But it looks like lot splitting, things that get in the way of lot splitting are the problem from the SB 9 point of view. Yeah, you pretty much have to allow the lot splitting. So how do we make it so that we have objective standards that then get applied to what can be built on it? Okay.
And I will say on the wildfire issue, since this is a question that comes up with respect to the designation of high fire severity zones and also what building standards are applicable. Those are both slightly covered under state law, but not entirely preempted. So with respect to designation of a high fire severity zone that is typically done by the state, but the local agency has the authority, the city has the authority to expand that. So you could, in theory, designate slightly broader than what the state designates as a very high fire severity zone. Whenever you do that, building code requirements change for projects. They have to comply with the Chapter 7A building code requirements, which are basically fire hardening. Different fire materials, different, you know, protective devices are required. You have additional landscape management requirements that are imposed as a matter of state law whenever a property is designated as a very high fire severity zone. Additionally, any properties that you guys do designate, so if you expand the state designation, you know, that does create implications for the residents in terms of fire insurance and things like that, that you also need to be mindful of as you're developing policy in that area. But in terms of imposing stricter building requirements for a second unit, you know, I don't know how you would necessarily do that, since they're just going to be subject to the same building code requirements that are applicable to the primary unit. There's not really a logical basis to distinguish those, if that makes sense.
So quick questions. So these bills essentially throws out the general plan and the subdivision map out the door, doesn't it?
I will say that it definitely does make some difficulties under the Subdivision Map Act. I will agree with you there, Councilmember. But, you know, it does, it actually amends the Subdivision Map Act to provide for this ministerial approval process. So, yes, it does make difficult, you know, purposes of amending the city's housing element and general plan. Potentially, it may actually make it easier to comply with the city's RENA numbers, which is something I'm going to, you know, discuss with the planner and, you know, the planning consultant the city has hired for the purposes of, you know, designating the city's inventory.
I have a question.
Yeah.
So some parts of the city have better evacuation routes than others. Are there kind of any sort of objective labels on which streets have better evacuation routes than others? And can we say, you know, you shall not develop more than X number of units if there isn't sufficient egress?
Yeah, I think that is an excellent question. I think we can take it back to Mr. Ford and anyone else, and Mr. Rudin and anyone else who has some input on that. I think Councilmember Turner brought it up. Probably the simplest metric we have has to do with street widths and maybe street lengths. I think there's, there's issues for people with turnarounds that are, that are required by the various fire agencies. And in terms of what can be built and how. But again, I was having those same questions, which is what, how do we make that objective? What can we apply to people? And and yet allow people to still live their lives. Certainly, we've seen people complaining that they're having trouble building on their lots at the end of some of these long, narrow streets. And so they're they're already suffering from that, and if we tighten it up too much, we may create a lot of unbuildable stuff on the hillsides. I don't know if that's what we want to accomplish or not.
I meant it more in terms of capacity, you know, if you add one home at the end of a, you know, dead end street versus six. And then another idea was some of these multifamily developments, could we? Have a requirement for a number of parking spaces to be contained within the development and have them be hidden parking spaces. Because on these narrow streets, you don't really want to increase the the street parking with multifamily developments.
Yeah, that's that's a good point, I think, and and again, we may need Mr. Rudden, Mr. Ford is the expert, subject matter experts to watch for this. I think S B nine tells us we can only require now one parking space per unit, period. And which is completely unreasonable and unrealistic and and problematic, so.
Right, excuse me, Mr. Mayor, but the other issue on this either brings up is that we can do develop standards about. The type of landscaping to mask or buffer the. The parking spaces or space from public view, public realm.
Okay, interesting. Ms. Turner, you had more comments?
Ah, yes, I do. A quick one again. For for I think one of the things we need to incorporate in this is is the public safety standards, the evacuation standards, for example. I I remember we had the discussion not not too long ago with Mister with Attorney Rudden. And we talked about. The N F P A, the fire department had had certain. Requirements, one of the things we could look at is incorporating those requirements into our objective standards. Because they're they're they are probably more rigid than anybody could think of, and I think this is one of the things that that group. From SCAG is going to put together is to incorporate the N F P A standards. Do you remember that discussion we had, Sergio? It was quite a while ago.
At this point, I would say no, but there are a number of, I I don't see any issue with incorporating standards or requirements that, you know, are. Proposed by the counties, you know, or the fire protection district with respect to fire protection into, you know, local city requirements. I think in terms of N F P A requirements, a lot of the California Fire Code, which, you know, regulates. Fire safety issues for buildings already incorporates a lot of N F P A standards.
I know Mr. Alahi has his hand up, but I wanted to check, Ms. Harrington, you, do you, did you have any comments and want to provide some input? With Mayor Poojam Alahi first and and we are going to have to wind up pretty soon since.
I'm perfectly happy to yield to anybody on the planning commission. Love to hear from them and I know Brian was withholding some comments, so Brian, if you have something you want to talk about first, please go ahead.
Have we heard from all the commissioners with the speech?
Nobody's waving hand at us, so.
Okay. I have a couple of questions on some of the objective standards and I'm not sure if these are. Put in to prompt our thinking or if these are put in because that's this is the first cut. And I apologize if I if I don't understand this, but for example, I'm looking at. Section B three dot two. I have some issues with that and then in section three, one dot two. Got some issues there and also two dot one. And then on materials in section B three dot one. We seem to be missing things like core ten and zinc. In its building exterior and. No, I I'm wondering if he's prohibited copper from an environmental perspective, so. And and I'm not sure if Mr. Ford would like to have our our feedback on these. Items that the detail separately, because I could certainly do that.
That would be great.
Yeah, I was going to suggest that from a Brown Act point of view and and as well as moving forward in a timely manner that. Everyone is going to need to provide their input as they, as you come up with other cities' objective standards, examples that may be helpful, et cetera. Are all going to need to get to Mr. Ford. So that he can move this to the next phase and really implement the best ideas. And then bring it in, maybe with some some different possibilities for us to consider, since it is working on the fly here. As we're trying to bring this all together. And so, Mr. Alahi, some final comments?
Yeah, thank, thank, thank you. Basically, I think we've kind of gone through it and I don't know if it's appropriate for Mr. Ford to. Kind of look at the map of Montessorino and try to identify streets that would be inappropriate to have further development on because of the ingress and ingress issue that has been raised by Councilmember Turner. And also look at the fire thing, when we are, we're doing an A bag appeal that's coming up next week. There's a fire map that's been submitted with that, which is a different map. But I think we can use that to identify areas where multiple housing should be carefully reviewed before it goes out there. And then we talked about slope density, you know, and again, I'm trying to see if there's an approach where. We can put on a map where we have these issues that we should identify beforehand. On the ministerial notice thing that we talked about, I I suspect one way the notice could go out is to say. This is a ministerial act, but if you think the. The application doesn't quite. Fit in with the ministerial requirements and, you know, you can, you can have the matter set up for hearing and I. Mr. Rudden can let us know if that they'll go anywhere or not, but that may be a way for neighbors to come in and say, yeah, this is not quite ministerial, you're pretending it to be ministerial, but it's not. So I mean, those are my comments and good luck to you, Mr. Ford. I think we've got a lot on your plate there.
All right, Mr. White has his hand up, let's get additional comment.
Very quickly, thank you, Mayor. Just, I was going to ask Mr. Ford. Sorry to follow up on Mr. Logi's comments, but as soon as we can get this working draft with the diagrams and any comments that you're going to make amendments to. To the site and architecture would be really helpful to our commission so that we can spend a couple of weeks with the document. And be prepared at our next commission meeting in November to actually have an intelligent discussion. And offer you something that can then be delivered to the city council at their upcoming meeting thereafter, so. Not to put a huge strain on you, but the sooner the better for us from a commission standpoint, please, thank you.
And and also the ad hoc committee members from the city council, if you can keep feeding into Mr. Ford. That would be great. Okay, Mr. Ford, any closing comments?
Yeah, so if I could just say one thing, one thing really quickly, I just want to point. Councilmember Lawler to be one point two. It's probably, it probably isn't exactly what you were looking for, but that's where we tried to deal with. One parcel having an open spaced area and how what that impact was on the other, on a different parcel, whether it be a sleeping area or quiet area. So right now, your sports courts are defined as a three thousand square foot area, I believe. So we didn't find a definition of any area underneath that, but what we did is we put the onus on the property that was developing or redeveloping and required them to. Putting landscape screening. Either through taller trees, taller shrubs or trellises or something to create a screening effect. So that it hopefully would not have as much impact on the other parcel. So it may not be what you were looking for, but at this second point there.
Right, yeah, no, thank you. Really quickly, so is there a way that we could? Stretch that to bedrooms and other, well, I never mind, never mind, that's all right, that's fine, thank you.
I was going to say, I think, I think we can stretch all of those, we've got the placeholders and and let's continue everyone to give the input. All right, Mr. Mekachak, you've got your hand up.
Would it be appropriate for council members to make comments at the site and architectural commission meeting? Or should we feed those separately to Mr. Ford? What's most appropriate in expeditions?
So obviously, I think we can make our comments to Mr. Ford as we have input. Mr. Rudin, is there any issue with council members attending site and architecture as that's a public meeting?
I I don't see an issue with. You know, individual council members, i.e. less than a quorum, attending a public meeting of the. Site and Architecture Commission. If there's, you know, more than a quorum attending, then we have to agendize it as also a city council meeting. So there is that, I am concerned, however, of more than a quorum of council members or more than a quorum of site and architecture commission members directly providing comments to Mr. Ford on. The proposed language as that may also be a hub and spoke meeting. So, you know, I I think, you know, if we if we really all want to provide comments, we need to have another joint study session. You know, that that really is the right way to do these sort of things.
All right, let's coordinate with you to stay on the right side of the law on those issues as we work through this process because we don't want to have to do it over. Mr. Alahi, we do need to wrap up soon, we've got a council meeting to get to, but you have your hand up, go ahead.
Yeah, no, just a quick comment, just want to make sure Mr. Ford. Has the seven day ordinance I I made earlier on today regarding. Greenhouse gas free buildings that need to be constructed, so that could be part of our planning also.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thanks. Let's go ahead and close this meeting out since we need to run to our city council meeting and get started on that.
Thank you, council members.